Thank you, everybody. We'll open this evening's Board of Directors meeting for December 18th, 2014. I'll save my remarks until our member in board comments. So why don't we get underway and get to the agenda? Let's focus on the consent agenda. I move to adopt the consent calendar as written, including the following items: Adoption of regular meeting agenda, approval of board minutes, November 20th, 2014, regular board meeting, legal committee report, committee appointments, board advisory committee resolution updates, the testimony to Fairfax County Planning Commission on Effective New Rest and Association Land Use Review Process, a case study, Lake Anne redevelopment project, community engagement advisory committee 2015 work plan, the pedestrian and bicycling advisory committee 2015 work plan, the environmental advisory committee 2015 work plan, and finally, the corrective amendments to the deed.
Second?
Thank you. All those who favor the motion, please signify by stating aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody stating? Okay, thank you. And Kate, we move on to you.
Yes, and I apologize for the lateness of my report. Typically, I try to get it out a week ahead of time. I literally got it out a few hours ago, so it's loaded in Dropbox for you now, and I wanted to go through it. Usually what you see in the report is a report on all of the different activities that have been underway, a financial report, and all of that. This time, what I wanted to do in the month of December is I went back and I looked at our history. When we do CEO reports in December, we've never done one before, and I thought, okay, now I remember why, because I'm rushing today to try and get it done. But I think what's most important to me is my staff, and I wanted to take time in this report to thank them for everything that they have done through the course of the year. They have been built up over the course of the year. We have had new people come on, we've had promotions, we've had retirements, and we've had people who have just sought to change chapters in their lives. I've got a fantastic team. We completed that team earlier this month with the promotion of Mike McNamara to our Deputy Director of Maintenance. So on my team now, I have our Senior Director of Parks and Recreation Larry Butler, who's doing a great job. I have our CFO, David Harris, who's doing a very good job as well. I've got Kirsten -- wait a minute, you're not going to call that into question, are you?
No, I am not. For the benefit of the people who are watching, perhaps they could stand up?
I could do that. Do you want to stand up as I call your -- would you like to do that? They're like, okay. Larry Butler, Senior Director of Parks and Recreation. Turn to that camera and wave. David Harris, CFO for Rest and Association. Well done. Kirsten Carr, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Anna Barone, Director of Covenants Administration. Melissa Kelly, Director of Administrative Services and HR. Honored to have with us tonight our Deputy Director of Recreation Services Laura Kowalski. Not with us tonight is our Deputy Director of Maintenance Mike McNamara, who's busy with basketball. He's got two girls, and he's a coach, and his wife helps keep the numbers and all that, so I thought, okay, you can take care of that. That's important, being with kids. I'm proud of my team. They really do a great job. They're focused on taking rest into the next 50 years. You've all seen some of the goals that have come through in past reports. More to come. They work very hard, and I'm very proud of them. We've had some new faces come into the organization as well. Dan Marneek is our new camp program director. There's some information about him in the CEO report. We also have someone new on our member services team. It's Karen Berry. She just started this week, but she's a Reston resident, and she's very excited to help our members with all of the different information that we pass out and we give and answer questions at her member services desk. She comes with a lot of experience. She's a parent in the community and understands what Reston Association means and does, so that's a great help to us. Bittersweet is Mary Conaway is retiring in mid-February. She is not going to be sitting and resting on her laurels. She's actually getting ready to enter a new chapter in her life, and she's getting into health and fitness and helping and coaching others. So it's been a great honor to have her on staff. We will miss her, but she says she wants to come back, volunteer, and help us with the tennis program as it continues on. Most excited tonight to announce our Employee of the Year. It's Rob Tucker. He's our tennis office assistant right now, or tennis assistant, and he does a great job. What was fun about the announcement of this is it happens during an employee luncheon that we have every year, staff holiday luncheon. We go to a local restaurant to host us, and all of our staff, including our field staff who work very hard, come, and we enjoy each other's company, have a lot of good laughs, and share some really, really good food. And during that time, I get the pleasure of announcing staff service awards, letting everybody know whose length of service. We were celebrating someone who's been here for 25 years this year, 20 years of service, 10, five, and then the Employee of the Year. So what I typically like to do is read through the announcement and try to let them guess. Who could it be? I try to take out the him, the her, and all of this. And I got about halfway through, and the hints were coming out. People were figuring out that it was our -- that it was Rob. And he was way in the back of the room, and people started whispering his name, and all of a sudden, he sat up and he looked around. Rob's got a unique character. He likes to tell a lot of jokes. He's easy to get along with. As you read through the write-up, you'll understand why he was selected. So he looked at me, and I said, "Come here, Rob." And he got up and he slowly walked to me, and by the time he hit me, he had tears rolling down his face. And here's why. He was selected amongst his peers as Employee of the Year, and he was that moved by it. And it was really cool. And he was, for once, speechless, which is rare for Rob. So he listened as I continued to brag about him, and when I said, "Do you have anything to say?" By this time, he said, "Yes." And we happened to be kind of in a bar-ish type of place, and he said, "Well, this guy walks into a bar," and the whole place erupted, because that's a typical Rob thing to do. He always knows what to say at the appropriate time. But it's neat, and it's a great program that's been in place for a number of years to see the employees select amongst themselves, and we ask for nominations from the community. And they look at the nominations that come in and decide who should get it. So that's fun. It's a neat part. We'll get to embarrass him a little bit more at the annual meeting in April and thank him for his service. But I'm very honored by my staff. They do a fantastic job. Reston wouldn't be what it is without them, and I rely on them every day. And I thank you all who are with me tonight, including Mr. Priestley, who's here to help us with capital projects this evening. Thank you for doing that. And Sean, behind the camera back there, when you video all the time, I appreciate that. But thank you all for everything that you do. I'm blessed to have you.
Thank you, Kate. It was a very well-done CEO report. A good way to finish off the year, as well as highlighting our last meeting of the year as well. As I was explaining to one of our members the other evening, one of the things I think every member can be very proud of is the staff of Reston Association and the volunteers and those people that work on a part-time basis. The boards can always be criticized, but you, your senior leadership team, and the staff, I think, do an excellent job of keeping Reston a great place to live, so well done. That's a great way to finish off for the year, so well done. So thank you. Okay, let's move on to -- horrible segue. Let's move on to item D, Recreation Services Strategic Plan. Laura, welcome.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you for being here.
Mister Kinneven, if you could come up here, I have something to present to you. So I'm here tonight to talk with you about the Recreation Services Strategic Plan, but before I do that, I have -- where am I pointing?
You do it.
I'm not sure.
Turn it on.
It's on. It's on. Okay. Okay, thanks. So I had the pleasure of going to the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society's annual conference, and I was really pleased at the award ceremony to receive an award on you all's behalf. This is for the -- let me see. It's not coming out. Okay. Well, this is the Best New Renovation or Addition Bricks and Mortar Award presented to Dogwood Pool for Reston Association. So I present this to you on behalf of our members.
Well, thank you. I think the first thing I'd do is present this right back to those people fully responsible for this.
So one of the -- we don't know what awards are given, so we went and were reading the description, and they said Homeowners Association. I was like, yes, we're in. We got it. But it's very exciting for our staff and for the -- seeing the pool used the last two years and then knowing the planning that we have for next summer and the summer after, and the new things that will be coming. It's really neat to see that, you know, see the facility shine.
Absolutely. Well done.
Okay, on to the strategic plan. So this should work. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you about the purpose of Recreation Services, how we fit into the overall Reston Association strategic plan. Who attended the actual plan? Kate wanted me to take you through step-by-step, and then also the future for Recreation. So Parks and Recreation is up -- can you all see that? Okay. Parks and Recreation, the purpose and mission. This is what we do. As stated in the bylaws, and I am going to read this one, we foster -- Parks and Recreation will foster the fullest usage of the lands and facilities managed by it and serve the leisure time needs of the association residents by establishing and seeking actively to have established leisure time programs in the association's facilities and lands. So this is why we're here. This is the whole purpose of Recreation Services. It doesn't roll off the tongue very easily, but this is why we're here. Next, you're very familiar with this. When we look at the RA strategic plan, one of your areas of focus is programs and services. So the purpose of our strategic plan in Recreation Services was to develop a roadmap for the department and have staff take an active role in charting that course and for not only our department, but also for the organization, and then also to plan for our next budget cycle. So who participated? Full-time staff at all levels. We had our coordinators, supervisors, managers, and all of the departments related to Recreation Services: aquatics, tennis, environmental resources, watershed maintenance, administrative staff, and directors. And it's hard to see, but I did want to note that our Deputy Director for Maintenance, Mike McNamara, did participate from the beginning to be the voice of the facility and maintenance side of the house, because they're very important, and we work together in many, many ways. So I can't tell you how exciting it was to try to come up with a very fun way to present a strategic plan, any strategic plan, but this is a Recreation strategic plan, so we tried to make it a little bit fun. You know that there are four different areas. There are -- there's the area of focus, the goals, objectives, and action steps. So we're going to follow the bouncing ball. And I tried to make it fun. I know it's not that great. But so our strategic areas of focus were needs assessment, facility enhancement, health and wellness, year-round recreation, collaboration, and sharing our story. And that's fun to look at, but we're going to skip right by it. Needs assessment is our first one that we tackled, and the goal is to identify the recreation needs of our members. The objectives to achieve this include conducting a recreation survey, identifying what our members value and what they would like to see in Reston, evaluating our programs and services to ensure that they're relevant, sustaining, and what our membership wants to see, review our evaluation processes to ensure that we're gathering perspective from all parties involved, not just one form filled out by one participant, but a -- not just our managers, but our frontline staff, the instructors that are actually conducting the programs, and if it's a child's program, not just the parent, but we want to get the information from the child as well. And then finally, compare ourselves to what's going on nationwide. Our next area of focus is facility enhancement, and the goal, to improve the quality and optimize the use of existing facilities while pursuing new opportunities. So you may remember that our mission statement said to foster the fullest usage of lands and facilities. This is the area where our maintenance staff and Recreation Services staff meet. In our objectives, we will establish a planning team to enhance, restore, upgrade, repurpose existing facilities, and address curb appeal and program use. A good example of this is with the Brown's Chapel site. We have -- it's almost like a clean slate. It's very functional, the way that it is, but if we can enhance that site and that curb appeal, we can also create additional use for rentals, for use inside the chapel. And it's also, in terms of curb appeal, it's the first thing that camp parents see when they come to the site. So we have an opportunity to make an impression on our camp program too, not just the facility, but the program. Evaluate our facility for ADA compliance -- I'm sorry about that. There you go. For ADA compliance and to create a multi-year implementation plan, continuously apply sustainability principles and practices for new and existing facilities, and then begin an aggressive search for additional new venues and the expansion of our existing facilities. A great example, you'll hear an update on Pony Barn following me, where the neighbors are working on the redevelopment plan. So this is -- this falls right into this strategic area where they are evaluating the existing facility, talking about ADA, sustainable principles, and it will become a place where we can program in the future as well. And I just want to note that some of these accessible features that you see here are very simple, some are on a larger scale, but you see that the wheelchair, it's just access from one point to another, from one area to another. A swing that can fit on a standard-sized swing, there are a few at the different schools in Reston. And then up above, there's the young lady in the blue shirt, and she was a consultant on that playground, and the consultants asked her, "What would you like to see? How can you play?" And she said, "Well, I'd like to walk side-by-side with my friends, not in a single file line." I'd also, when I get onto a play equipment, I want to make sure that people can get by me. So she talked about different ways of making the facility accessible so that they can play. So I'm excited to start working on some of those for our future projects. Our next area is health and wellness, to provide and promote the environmental and recreation opportunities that enhance health and wellness of our members. So what I'd like for you to do -- let's see here. Let me do this. By creating new and enhance existing health and wellness events and programs at RA facilities. So what I'd like you to do, because this is Recreation, is sit straight up in your chair. Come on. Come on. Okay. No, it's in your chair. You can sit in your chair, or you can stand. Close your eyes, take a deep breath, hold it in, and as you exhale, let all of your Reston Association worries go away. Now, was that a big one, Kate?
Was that a repeat?
You can repeat as often as necessary, but as you can see, now we can check off one item on the action steps, because we have now created a stress relief program for our Board of Directors. Excellent. And then finally, establishing a branding message to promote the health and wellness benefits of RA. When we think of health and wellness, we think of our tennis, our camps, our aquatics. We think of those obvious things, but there are so many others. Senior Movie Day happened on Wednesday, and it's a great opportunity for a segment of our population for social wellness, and it was great. And what our staff recognized in creating these objectives is that we need to work on advertising the other health and wellness, not just what is obvious, swimming and tennis. So more to come for that. All right. Year-round recreation, to provide expanded year-round recreational opportunities to the Reston community. Again, referring back to our purpose and mission, to fully provide leisure programming at our facilities, we continuously expand programming based on facility capabilities for year-round recreation. We've talked about extended camp programs for winter and spring that we haven't done before, so look for that coming soon. Market our programs and facilities that are available year-round, our pathways, our nature house. You can see in the little corner, there's someone, and it's snowing in that picture on a stand-up paddleboard. And obtain indoor space for expanded year-round programming for inclement weather use. Collaboration, to provide exceptional recreation services by collaborating with internal and community partners. So we've already begun this first one, establishing efficient internal processes to collaborate on programs and services. In September, we established Parks and Recreation site meetings, and as you know, we're currently housed in three different locations: nature house headquarters, and then also central services facility. So it's very easy to say out of sight, out of mind. So what this did was brought us together. We started at our Autumn Wood Recreation site, and the supervisors and managers walked around and talked about their areas of responsibilities, what their challenges were, and then out of that meeting came about 10 different meetings individually, one-on-one, so that we can improve efficiencies and effective management and programming of that site. So we'll be continuing that throughout the year. And then continuously explore and nurture existing relationships with community partners to determine shared recreational and environmental opportunities. Next month, we have a joint meeting with Reston Community Center staff and our programming staff to explore just that. So we're already jumping ahead to get started. And then finally, sharing our story, to communicate the value of Reston Association's recreational and environmental opportunities and experiences. There are so many great stories that can be shared. This was sort of the toughest slide for me to hone in on, just one story. But one that stuck out was tennis. A woman won a raffle, and the raffle, the item that she won was a racket. It was at a tennis function, and so she took that racket and she thought, "I'm going to donate something." So she donated to the Friends of Reston specifically for a tennis program. And we found out that a couple of our tennis pros were subsidizing themselves, helping some kids that were eligible for scholarships, so we made that connection. So the woman that won the tick the raffle, who donated the funds to the Friends of Reston, was able to help us send, pay for five scholarships for students to participate in junior team tennis for this fall and winter. And the opportunity -- I mean, you've got, you have people standing right in front of you, and Sabrina and Kate, who have participated in programs, have gained skills, become of age to have a job, learn job skills there, and then are now giving back to those programs and services that we started in ourselves. So these are the stories that we have. There are so many, though, and moving forward, we want to share those stories. Our future. Action steps are being developed right now. Central Services Facility will begin its strategic plan, and my role as Deputy Director for Recreation, I will also be sitting in on their strategic planning session with my Recreation hat on. And then you all will be embarking on your own strategic plan soon. So the bench. This is my last section. The bench. I want to leave you with just one more story, and I started to tell Mr. Higgins this a few days ago. There's a bench in New York City, and the Parks and Recreation staff asked people to share what that bench meant to them. And some people said, "I stopped to tie my shoe." Some people said, "I sat on it while I was waiting for the bus." Some said, "I needed a place to sit and think about what my next steps were." Another said, "It saved my marriage." Another said, "I proposed on that bench." Someone else ran 10 miles and just needed to take a break. But all of that is recreation, and Reston provides all of that. All of the benches, all of the pools, all of the pathways, all of those amenities that we have help the health and wellness of our members, you. So the next time you walk by a bench in Reston, I ask that you take a seat, and you think about your health and your wellness, and create your own Reston stories that you'll share. Thank you for your time.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done.
Great, and it was a lot of fun working with your staff to put that strategic plan together. You've got a great team, and it'll be a lot of fun to see this come to action and how it dovetails with all the other activities of the organization too.
I would add, the concept of the bench is intriguing. I like the brand, and it might be something that you can think about for sort of a two-way outreach, an area for people to provide their thoughts and comments on what the bench means to them. So just food for thought. That was a nice finish. Anybody else? Questions? Jeff, anything?
Now, there can be no hard questions.
Oh.
That's it. I'm just kidding. Yes.
No. First point, you know, really, really fine job. And Kate, and I'm sure this is part of your influence, but I love how everything you're doing, you're focusing back to strategic objectives of the association, really making the types of connections that we want, and so everything is aligned, I'm sure. Thank you for putting forward, and doing a good job on that. One of the things that I have a particular interest in as we move forward is, as we're doing our assessment of our needs and identifying these capabilities, I want to be sure that we're also looking on the financial side too, so we get a good understanding of what our programs cost to deliver versus revenue we're getting in, just kind of do a good program analysis, so we're making good business decisions, so that we can really maximize the amount of program that we can provide and the fiscal costs and the like. But I love the approach. I look forward to seeing the results.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel?
Thank you, Laura. I haven't been benched since I played basketball, so thank you. One relationship we've had, and which I'll speak to, is there's been a long-term relationship regarding the Science Camp with the Reston Association and the US Geological Survey, and we've had some funding issues at our institution, but I hope that will be allevied so we can continue to have Science Camp, maybe on our campus in the future, but I've been volunteered over many years, and it's been a wonderful experience. Those people I know who volunteered, who are, participated, have always enjoyed that, have that particular, one of many opportunities that Recreation affords here in Reston, so thank you for that.
Sure, and I know our camp program manager did talk with USGS recently, so they're on their way.
Communications in place. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Red job, Laura.
Will, anything? Magnificently done. I'll come back to you.
Uh-oh.
Danielle?
Excellent job. I just echo what Jeff had said about the financial impact. Not necessarily that we would cut a program if it's not making money, but as long as we know what the revenue and expenses truly are.
Anything?
Great job.
Yes, Lucinda, I see you're at the speakerphone down there, so I wanted to ask you if you have any comments?
Great job, thanks for sharing that with us, and no comments.
Okay. Eve, anything?
Yeah.
Okay, John?
All right. Yeah, well done. We've been, one of the things I've admired about Reston Association since I've been on the board is that they do pay a lot of attention to the strategic planning process. And many of us, I think, have gone through that in our organizations and institutions that we've worked for in the past. Many times, those become three-ring binders that end up on the bookcase, and we go back to work as usual. And it's neat to see that the Board is focusing on making sure that there is an alignment between the actions being taken by the staff on behalf of the community that goes back to our mission statements and our goals. So it's neat to see that it's not one of those things that's a three-ring binder in my closet, so, well done.
Thank you.
Kate?
Now, to follow up Jeff and Danielle's comments, Laura and David and Larry and I are already focused on doing that analysis, so we need to do it anyway as we prepare for the 2016-17 budget year, but that is very important to take a zero-based look at everything that we're doing, so underway, definitely underway.
Yes, one more question in regards to assessing the financial contributions of particular resources in the community. I know we do an evaluation of the water quality of our lakes as part of a regular annual process here at Reston. However, sort of assessing the recreational contributions of our lakes and how we can maximize those, that's a little harder to determine, I wonder, really, just a thought question, but how you might better assess the contribution of the lakes to, as a recreational resource in Reston?
I will work with Nikki Fermentzki, or, excuse me, Nikki Velezza, she's been married probably for five years now, on that, along with Larry, but you will see some new programming coming soon on the lakes too, having access for our camps, there will be a Water Everywhere Camp as a new theme this year, so we will be teaching how to canoe, so we have more coming, but I will, I'll work with them on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura, thank you very much.
Happy holidays to you all.
You too, thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura.
All right, the next item is the Pony Barn Working Group. How are you?
Good.
Good?
Good, thank you, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Bob Wolf, Mary Ann Zay, with myself, are pleased to be here tonight to present with an update on the work of our group. I know you've heard about it. Before I begin though, I want to take this time to thank the Board and the RA staff for giving us, the members of the community, the opportunity to participate in this working group, to actually take an active role in the planning, and we think also, we plan to be here for the long haul, the implementation of improvements to the Pony Barn area. So who are we? The Pony Barn Working Group was established earlier this year, we had our first meeting in August, we've been meeting monthly since then. We're comprised of 20 to 30, it varies, it's an open meeting, so people come and go, but at our core, I'd say we have pretty much 20 active members, most of whom are from the Pony Barn area, but from others from throughout Reston as well. Our process, I know you're interested in how that's been working, since this is a relatively, I think, new, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a model for Reston, has, I think, been working really well. It's very open, it's collaborative, it's congenial, and it's productive. I think everyone, now that we are very, very focused on how we can make a big difference in those park areas, everybody's really working together and getting along quite well. We're also working closely with RA, we depend on Larry and Kate, Sabrina and others, Claudia, to help us think through how we're going to proceed with this process, and they've been terrifically supportive and helpful, I can't say enough about that, thank you, very, thank you, they're a pleasure to work with, really. So anyway, so, we started this process by the group coming together and deciding what we wanted to do with these parks area, with this parks area. I hope, just so, in case you don't know, you may know, the parks, the park areas, we call it parks because there are two parcels, one is a picnic pavilion, typical picnic pavilion, the other is what we call the Butterfly Meadow, which is an open area with wildlife and birds and all kinds of wonderful things going on there. So we're looking at both of those areas, and they are, while they're related, they are distinct in how they're used, and you'll hear more about that later, but we decided we wanted to agree on how we wanted to proceed before we could actually develop a plan. So the first thing we decided is we wanted to refresh these parks, not repurpose them, you know, there was some talk about repurposing them into a memorial garden or something else, and we decided they're valuable pieces of property, particularly in our neighborhood, and we want to maintain the purpose that they have, they need improved and enhanced, but they don't need to be repurposed. We want the playground to remain open for families and children to enjoy, and we want that pavilion to be brought up to par with other Reston picnic facilities. If you've been over there, you'll see that it isn't quite what it needs to be, it's been neglected for a while, so we're really excited about this opportunity. We think the Butterfly Meadow should continue to support wildlife and all of the ecology that takes place every day there without human interference, it's doing it, Mother Nature's just done a terrific job there, and Reston should be very proud of having that space available for everyone to enjoy. But we do think there are improvements and enhancements that do need to take place, it needs to be more appealing, particularly the picnic pavilion, including, we have some ideas you'll hear about in a little while here, about adding some educational elements. We think we're creating a new model here for what this area can be. Additionally, we've been thinking a lot about all of this. Our collective vision has really been driven by the following themes, we want to maintain an open, multi-use area that will engage children and families, that's first and foremost. Secondly, we want to preserve the natural tree and wildlife areas, don't think there's any need, if we don't have to, to take down any more trees or disturb the wildlife that is enjoying particularly the meadow. We want to add creative and artistic play equipment for toddlers, and we'll explain a little more later why we focus on toddlers. And we are also interested in trying to provide some play equipment for handicapped children, if it's possible, it'll depend on what the site, what we can do there at that site. We also want to acknowledge and enhance the equestrian, the historic equestrian, the history of the equestrian use of that park, as well as diverse ecological and wildlife elements, again, later in this presentation you'll hear some ideas we have for that. We also want to balance improving this site with avoiding the additional influx of traffic. It is a very small area, the street, Triple Crown Road barely can manage two cars going by, and right now, even with the current use of the pavilion in particular, it's overflowed traffic parts in the street, it's very hard to get by, and quite honestly, it can be even dangerous. And additionally, we think, we want to create these parks, we want to improve these parks so that they become very appealing, particularly for folks who may not be able to get their, of their own, on foot. So we want to make sure it's accessible to both Triple Crown Road and Steeplechase Road, and that we want to always take into consideration any ADA concerns. So we'll be working on that again, as we gain more information about what the site can actually accommodate. So what have we done today? We knew that we needed to collect information, so we've been asking some folks from the community and some within Reston Association and outside of Reston Association to share with us some information about what they do and how they can help us. So we have presentations from IPAR, from the Fairfax County Park Authority, two gentlemen who spoke to us about handicap-accessible playgrounds. We have heard from Reston Association staff, the camp program, Walker Nature Center, the meadow program. We've heard from Hunter's Woods Elementary School, which is right down the road, and we think there's a terrific opportunity there to partner with the school and with the students, the teachers. And then from the Pony Barn Parks Alliance, a group of concerned neighbors who have come together to assure that those parks remain parks. We've done some initial research, way, way more to do, but we have done some work on looking at some playground equipment, accessible equipment, toddler equipment. We've looked at getting certifications for the meadow, for, and you'll hear more about these later, as well as looking at, who are those partner organizations perhaps outside of Reston? There are so many in this region and nearby that we think can add great value to this effort. A site survey's been done, Larry can speak to that, we don't have those results just yet, but that has taken place. And then through, following all of this, a gathering of all this information that we have so far, the group came together this week, just Monday night, and we basically made our decisions, voted, on what we wanted to see done with those parks, what are the additions, the improvements, the enhancements we wanted to see, and what are some of the concerns and considerations we want to take forward. And Bob and Mary Ann are going to talk to you specifically about what those are, so they'll be with you in a minute. Before I bring Bob up, though, I'd like to ask if you have any questions, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jeff, anything?
No questions, just an observation, I was able to join the group early on as things were getting going, and just a fantastic group of people working on it, so I feel really proud of how far you've come and where we're going to go.
It's very exciting, as someone who's lived in Reston a long time and been through some tough times, with, to think, you know, you know what all these things are.
But people, just people coming together.
I just want to say, I think this is the right way to do it. You start engaging the residents, you know, at first, and gathering their ideas, you don't make a decision and then come to them and say, here's what we've decided, and then everybody goes crazy. It's get them engaged, get them involved, and it's, the other thing is, it's amazing how many brilliant, talented people live in this community, what a resource they are. You don't need to pay for a lot, we're all going to volunteer and do as much as we can to help Larry and Kate and Claudia and everyone get this, get this work done. So we're looking, we're really looking forward to it. So I'll turn it over to Bob, who's going to talk to you about the picnic pavilion.
Danielle, quick question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question, are you going to address YG's toddlers?
Yes, we will, yeah. Some of what I said, I didn't want to steal the thunder, so you'll hear about it.
How do I work this? You can work it for me. All right. A guy walked into the bar, no.
Just let me know what you want.
Yes, I will.
You want me to do it?
No, that's fine, well. His first slide just talks about the picnic pavilion, which in the 70s was a pony barn, a active pony barn, and it got converted, I think, in the 80s to a pavilion, they took the sides off of that, and right now, it sits with a wood chip floor, which is one of the things that we want to improve on by putting a cement floor in there, it's kind of dark in there with that ground cover, that might add more light, but the site does not have, or the pavilion does not have any electrical service at the present time either. So we want to bring in that electrical service for a couple of reasons, maybe to add more light if necessary, but after we get the floor in, that may not be required, but picnic goers sometimes bring crock pots, is that right, ladies? They need someplace to plug it in, and we're thinking about providing that kind of a service. Additionally, this slide talks about this bulletin board. Well, in addition to the bulletin board, we want to increase its facility with kiosks capabilities, and on the next slide, I'll speak to, speak to some of those things that we're considering. Additionally, as Renette mentioned, this facility, this particular piece of the park sits at the corner of Steeplechase and Triple Crown, and the, it's a residential streets, both of them, and there aren't sidewalks on both sides of Triple Crown. So what happens is people walk down Triple Crown, they, on the paved path that's available on one side of Triple Crown, and then they go into the park, and as they want to traverse up to Hunterwood School, they have to, they go through the park, and this picture there at the bottom of this slide shows a kind of, we call it the goat trail, that they travel through. So we need to improve that with some kind of paved surface. We also need some paved surface from the parking lot up to the pavilion for ADA compliance. Now, this slide here talks about, it shows you the entrance to the Pony Barn parking lot, and the pavilion is in the background there. The parking lot accommodates about 12 slots, and what you're met with as you enter the parking lot is the dumpster. Everybody in the neighborhood knows about the dumpster. We'd like to move the dumpster to some other location, like far away. It tends to be a transfer station for RA folks who, on, I think after the weekend, they travel the glade area and pick up trash from the baskets, and then they transfer it into the dumpster, and it gets picked up. So we're hoping we can find another place for the dumpster, maybe outside of this facility. This particular facility is one of the smaller parks, it's only about a half acre, and when you talk about the footprint of the pavilion and the parking lot, you're consuming about 30% of the available half acre or so. And if we're going to be ADA compliant, we're going to have to put in a particular parking space for ADA and pathways up to the pavilion, because it's a sloping piece of property. So we're looking to relocation that. Now, the other slide speaks, shows you the toilet facilities that are there, we need to maintain those, we're looking for just some, some kind of barrier to hide them from the rest of the park area visually. You need access, you need access, right now, they're located near the parking area, and that'll probably, needs to be maintained because the service trucks that come by and deal with people's waste have to have access to it. So we're just looking for ways to kind of provide a cover for that, so it's not that obvious. Now, on the, the next slide talks about some of the softer items that we're, excuse me, some of the softer items we're considering. That picture there is not the pony barn, that picture is the, I learned that it was called the South Riding Stable, that was off of Reston Avenue, where the vet offices, veterinarian offices now, and the intention is, that's the first picture I found. Now, we're looking for other pictures of the pony barn when it was in operation, because that bulletin board that I pointed out on the previous slide, we want to expand that into a kiosk of some sort to explain the history of this facility. Now, I've, we've been able to contact a number of the residents, George Zacco, my dentist, lives just around the corner, longtime resident, we've got another resident still on Triple Crown, whose daughter has a, who had a pony in the pony barn, we're looking for photographs from them and other people that we've contacted, and which, the idea is that expand this bulletin board into a kiosk, would have photographs, and then the notion is, at this prime, we would expand it with oral histories. The daughter of one of the residents on Triple Crown is very interested in this, and she's been contacting her friends who have had horses in the pony barn. been contacting her friends who have had horses in the pony barn, and if they can have pictures, we'll take them, certainly. Well, we want to do oral histories and create podcasts that people then can download from iTunes and learn about the history of the pony barns. In addition there, the slide talks about some of the play equipment that we want to add to it, and there was comments and questions about toddlers. There is a playground area further down Steeplechase that is for a, an older age group, and the community that surrounds the park is in a transition. Folks like us, or my age, are going to be moving out at some point, who knows where, but younger folks are coming in. We see a lot of strollers, and over time, there's going to be a population of younger children, and we want to accommodate those younger children, and especially, we want to, the idea of being ADA compliant is, as far as we're concerned, is not a compliance issue, it's what we want to do. And there are many things that can be accommodated to facilitate those young people. And now, Mary Ann, I think is going to speak to what was the riding ring. When the facility was in operation, a little, there was a path provided between the pony barn and an open area that used to operate as a riding ring for the ponies. It's been converted into a butterfly meadow, and Mary Ann's going to tell us what our plans are for that.
Thanks, Bob. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight. One of the issues that we faced is, we didn't want to really interfere with things that were going on in the butterfly meadow and the natural areas. I mean, how do you do that? This is, you may think that these are vacant properties, but they're not. There's a lot going on down there. I just noticed a few weeks ago, I was walking through there, there were bluebirds, there were foxes. In the summertime, I've seen the butterfly meadow undulating with the butterflies. So there's a lot going on there that's not just people things. So how do we accommodate that and still keep people out, but want to let people know what's going on and educate them about the natural setting that we're in? So one of the things we want to do is, we said, well, let's add an observation deck on Steeplechase, so that you can have people sort of being in the meadow, but not in the meadow, with adding educational elements to it, so that we can tell people about the butterflies, the wildflowers, the butterfly migration patterns, all those kinds of things, and also do the podcasts, and really try to be informative about the value of this wonderful place, and really share it with other people while not getting into it. We want to add more bird and bee houses as well. The thing I think you're going to like most about some of the things that we're doing is, a lot of the things that we're thinking about, pardon me, aren't going to cost anything, or they're, at least they're not going to be physical things that you're going to have to allocate funds for, and I think that's very exciting for us. So we want to develop a curriculum for children and campers, working with Hunterswood School, working with the Audubon Society, working with the Nature Center, so that they, we know that already, from what we heard from Hunterswood School, that the teachers use, they have a whole section on butterfly development. So this is a great opportunity for us to work with them, to come up with something that's, that's useful. We want to also seek monarch waystation certification. The story, in my perspective, is, I was going back to the RA magazine to look up something that I needed to know, and I fell onto that article about the plight of the monarchs, and it was all about setting up monarch waystation. What a great way to let people know what a great meadow this is, and what, how it's contributing by getting it certified as a monarch waystation. Same thing with becoming a sanctuary for wildlife through the Audubon Home Wildlife Sanctuary Program. Those things are very inexpensive, but they're going to probably get us a lot more notice and let people know how important that this is in the ecology of our, our community. So we've, but we want to collaborate with, in not only the meadow, but through both parks, with IPAR, the Ruston Historic Trust and Museum, Hunterswood School, the Audubon Society, the National Bee Conservancy, National Wildlife Federation, and if you have any other suggestions of who we should be collaborating with, please let us know. I think this is, when I was listening to the presentation about the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, it sounded like there were an awful lot of things that were very similar to what they were saying and what we're, what we're planning to do. So there's a lot of synergy here. Let me tell you that the working group members are committed to being active in this process, not just going through these meetings and getting a plan, but to reach out to partner organizations, conduct additional research, identify funding sources if necessary, help with property upkeep, we live there, we want it to look nice, and serve as community ambassadors. Overall, our, our mode is to upgrade this valuable and vibrant Parks area into an attractive and inclusive and natural site, providing a model education and recreational setting for all Restonians to enjoy. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Danielle?
No, excellent.
Thank you. We have a lot of work to do, though.
This is the, okay, yes, I do have some questions. Just, right now, is access to the meadow restricted?
Oh, that's okay.
Is, is access to the meadow restricted now?
There's a, there's a mulch path that goes down to the glade, and then there's another path that's, that's sort of mulch and straw that goes into the meadow on, like, one end of it. On the other side, on Steeplechase, there's a Fairfax County sidewalk that they just recently repaved, and there was a fence on that sidewalk that fell off. This, that, that meadow area was used during the stream restoration as the staging area for Wetland Solutions, and, and that's, it's taken a long time for it to start to come back from all the damage that was done at that point. So, so that, we're thinking that, that, we've talked, this is, the things that we're telling you tonight are just a small portion of what we're thinking about. We've talked the other night about making more accessible ways to get into the meadow, but we don't want people to be too much in the meadow, because we don't want the flora and fauna to be sent away.
Have you considered a raised walkway through the meadow? I mean, that's, it's a tool that's been used in a lot of ecologically sensitive environments and...
But we just, we just raised the issue of the, of the walkways through the meadow on Monday, so we haven't really gotten very far with that yet.
I think it's a really good educational opportunity, the walkways with little Vista points.
Yes, signboards.
The emphasis on a special needs park, I think, is great. I think that you would have to be careful about balancing, because you, it will draw many, many visitors. I mean, I think, I cannot say the name of the park in McLean.
Love and joy to you.
I'd look at those letters together, and I'm, no word will come out of my mouth, but I, I know that it has many, many, many visitors.
We've had a presentation on that park, and in fact, Lisa Burks, who is a member of the working group, is, is involved in that, not necessarily that park, I think she's in her extended family, has some children with, with needs, and she's given us some, some input. That particular park is...
Right, now, obviously, I don't...
It's off the charts.
It is, yeah.
Six billion dollars.
Yeah, I, probably, we're not thinking of that, but, you know, I think that, yeah, it's a pretty small area, by the way.
It is, I know that, yeah.
It'll be a couple pieces to put in, yeah.
Maybe just if they have, if they have that option, you know, if it's accessible and stuff like that.
Yeah, we're, we're with you on...
We're walking a fine line of really making it very appealing, we think we can do that, but also not making it too appealing, because there is very little space there apart.
Well, I guess that will be a future bridge to cross, or cross to bear, one or the other. But, great job, the, great, great job to have the community come together, and I think it's important that neighborhood, you guys know that, that the, the feeling of your neighborhood better than anybody else, and so your input is, is really important and critical. So, thank you.
We want Larry to...
Larry, I think that they have...
He wants more about the process.
And Laura just came back from his conference here, with that, with some play equipment that apparently has got her excited as well as Larry. We haven't seen the pictures.
I haven't seen it yet, but she says it's the coolest thing.
Multiple presentation on inclusion play.
All right. I, I just want to get up and say a couple words. It's been a pleasure working with Renette, Bob, and Mary Ann, and we, the early meetings were kind of rock and roll, but, you know, it's, it's been a really good process, and I think we're, everybody's fully engaged at this point, and we're moving forward. Just a quick update, this week, we finished the site survey, an ASBILT survey on the site, because we needed to get one foot topography. We have one foot, one foot topography below Triple Crown that was done by Wetland Studies, and so we needed to get that for the picnic pavilion site, so that when we get our landscape architect in, we'll know exactly what we need to do grade-wise for ADA compliance and sighting features and things like that. So that was just completed, I should get that data before the end of the year, and then, at the beginning of the year, I'll be putting out an LP for landscape architect to help the working group, to really kind of bring it home with all the elements and different features and things that you've heard about tonight, to get those actually on paper into a few concept plans, bring forward to both the board and the design review board. So we're, we're moving along. That's it.
Great. John, anything?
As Larry said, it started out rocky, and it's now on smooth footing, and I think it's going to be great. I think the effort, I mean, the product is going to be great, but I think the process is also going to prove to be very beneficial to the association.
Thanks, John.
I'm sorry I missed my first meeting on Monday, I'm sure I missed some exciting stuff, but a couple of things that I can provide some resources for, and I think RA staff probably has this well, and one is about permeable surfaces, where you can use those to reduce runoff with the paving that you're proposing to do. Second, there's a national effort on pollinators that's pretty prominent, and I know staff is probably familiar with that, but to the degree they're not, there are some researchers that, where I work, my day job, that could provide those contacts, and I'd be glad to be a resource in that regard. So, good work, thank you.
Jeff, anything?
Outstanding effort, I'm really, really proud of it, of the process, especially, I think it's a good, it's a very good model. Due to Emily, for the association, outstanding.
We can do a debrief afterward, lessons learned.
Absolutely, lessons learned, absolutely.
We actually, next month will be before the board is our, kind of our new, we have land, new land use resolution, and it talks about a new community input process, when we're looking at common areas, additions, alterations, and all of that, so I'm going to definitely send it to your group to edit for us when we, when we put it together, but I appreciate you guys being... That's okay, I know, and that's okay. But I appreciate you all being the test case, and working with us and trusting Larry and I as we move forward with you, because that's the most important, so we really appreciate your help.
Yeah, I just, I'll finish by saying thank you. I agree, we, we got off with an interesting start, but it has turned out to be what I think will be a template for how we will do this throughout the association, and as Kate said, we're putting together a resolution as to how we will address our facilities, large to small endeavors. So this is an excellent template, I think there are a lot of lessons learned, I think a debrief is critical, so stay with it. I've had the opportunity to sit in on many of the meetings and missed a few as well, but I also have to commend Kate, the staff, everybody, for keeping everything on track and giving everything that the community needed. So I just want to say thank you for your patience, as well as your willingness to just drive it forward. I'd love to see this kind of initiative, well done.
Great community engagement.
Yes, absolutely.
One of our strategic...
It's one of our goals.
One of our strategic areas of focus, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's a good segue to member and board comments. Let me, let's see if we have any signed up.
Don't forget that Lucinda's on the phone.
Oh, yes, Lucinda, I apologize. Any comments from you?
No, this has just been a great process, the RA staff has been really supportive, and the neighbors, I've been really impressed with the work that everybody's been doing on this, and the outcome seems like it's going to be terrific. So thanks to everybody, good job.
Thank you, Lucinda. All right, we do have a few folks here who have signed up, so I'll start with Matt Valentini. And again, if you could just say who you're representing, and go from there.
Sure. My name is Matt Valentini, I'm a vice president with the JBG Companies. We are a local 50-year-old real estate developer in the area, so thanks for allowing me to make some comments tonight. I came to talk about the initiative that Larry and Kate had put together to bring Mark Fenton out here last month or the month before, and just to focus on walkability. So, JBG, we're 50 years old, we own some local buildings, the Ruston International Center, the Sheridan, the Weston Hotels, we also own the Charter Oak Apartments. All in all, in Fairfax County, we own 10 office buildings, four hotels, thousands of residential units, and retail space. So we're a full-service developer, we do a whole host of things, and we've only, we're only active in Washington DC. Call it Arlington, Montgomery County, Fairfax. I'm going to talk and keep my comments focused on sustainability, on balanced demographics, on why walkability and walkable neighborhoods are more desirable. I'm going to focus on why they're good for budgets. Mark came out here and talked a little bit about walkability, bikeability, complete streets, trails, and street design, and how they all commit to healthy communities. I think he's right on, it was great and refreshing that the Ruston Association helped sponsor that, it was great to participate in it, I actually sat through one of the work sessions. Walkable neighborhoods are more sustainable, they take cars off the streets, with everything that's focused on, they attract walkers, bikers, they cause people to be more fit, they reduce traffic, air and water pollution, and walkability encourages healthy patterns of living. They also pull people out of their homes and into publicly accessible gathering spaces, such as plazas and parks, and there's an abundance of research that shows that walkable neighborhoods cause people to be more healthy because of the higher level of engagement with their neighbors. So Bob Simon, as we know, is ahead of his time, Ruston is known for these things, it's good to refresh it with having Mark out here. Another reason walkable and bikeable neighborhoods are important is they attract the younger people, so-called millennials, that you hear a lot about these days. It's no surprise that the population in Fairfax County is maturing, and we need to balance our county by making sure that young people have a place to go and stay, to live, work, and play. Highly educated, highly diverse millennials have been flocking to DC and Arlington and other counties for several years now, but Fairfax County's not getting their fair share. Taking a lead with respect to walkability and bikeability will help Ruston stem this tide and encourage, and continue to encourage the type of balanced growth that's important for our county. Also, a lot more interesting, they attract a mix of compatible uses, whether it's outdoor seating, restaurants, shops, or entertainment, they, they bring tourists to our neighborhoods. They become places where people want to live, work, and play. Think of Ruston Town Center, think of King Street in Alexandria, think of Georgetown, think of Bethesda, these are all places people want to go. They're complete streets with retail and activities, and by the way, they increase the value of real estate. So Eve and other real estate people can tell you that walkable neighborhoods actually drive higher values. So having places like that in Ruston and elsewhere is really important for, for our economy. It's also true for offices as well, though. One of the leading, apart from residential, one of the leading things in office space is what they call amenities. So office users want to be in an amenity, a rich environment, they want to be able to go out and grab a drink after work, they want to be able to go and find a place for lunch, they want to be able to go... They want to be able to go to a place, get the dry cleaning done, pick up groceries before they head home. So another reason walkability is important. My final point here would be that walkable neighborhoods help balance the costs of public investments. The suburban road model that we live with requires wider streets, dedicated left and right turn lanes, less development than in an urban setting and require higher rates of speed. By setting aside all of this public space for wider roads and turn lanes, these things don't pay for itself. Transportation policies and priorities cause us then to build and repair roads forever and ever with less residents to pay for it. It's kind of a Ponzi scheme. More and ever wider roads require more and more maintenance and more and more funds. Frankly, wider roads are also less safe. It's harder to cross a wide road. When roads, on the other hand, are sized to accommodate less commuters and more bikes, it becomes much more safer. So my point here is that in Reston and beyond, we need to assert that people are more important than cars and in our conversations with transportation officials, priorities need to change. Transportation policies as they exist in Reston today are antithetical to safe urban planning and everyone in this room should be encouraging VDOT to be more flexible with their urban standards. So how do we do these things? Again, I want to commend the Reston Association, I want to commend Kate, I want to commend Larry and everybody else who's involved because bringing Mark Fenton out and providing education is really important. It gets people talking about these things. Very important. We also need to get our policymakers together and help them focus on these urban standards. We've done it in Reston before. What was done in, at Soapstone with the skinny streets and the bike lanes, we're ahead of our time, right on point. So it's no surprise that this group is focused on it and this group is working at it, but Fairfax County hasn't followed suit. So from an advocacy perspective, we need to continue to encourage the folks at Fairfax County to do the same. And then again, I would just say I commend everyone here who is a part of that effort and encourage everyone to continue working at it because it makes for good communities and better places to live. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Next is Robin Parker. State your name and address.
Robin Parker, 2110 South Bay Lane and I'm on the South Bay Cluster Association Board and been here before, here again on the same topic, representing my neighbors who, many of whom have been here in previous months and spoken on the issue of the Bachi Court on the Cabot's Point Park. Tonight, there's a motion I see before the board regarding that Bachi Court and we have questions and concerns about that motion. And I think it's mainly just our not really understanding the process of how things get done in Reston, but this motion says that because of the new information that we have about potential cost of the Bachi Court, that there will, the motion is to discontinue the process of, of a resubmission of an application to the DRB for the court. Now, if, my question is, if this motion doesn't pass, if this motion fails to pass tonight or if this motion does pass tonight, what has happened to the original application that happened 12 months ago? Will it still be in effect? I mean, it was approved and will it continue to be approved and does that mean that the court could still be built under those smaller requirements, the smaller design than what probably this would have come through or what? I mean, how, what exactly does this motion mean?
It's just what it implies, that if the motion is approved to direct staff in light of the new information presented to stop, all efforts will stop.
Okay. Those words are not in the motion, but if that's the intention, then I guess that makes everybody happy. I think. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is David Prelowitz.
My name is David Prelowitz. I live at 2224 Cedar Cove Court in Reston and I've been in front of the board two previous times and I'd like to thank the board again for allowing me to speak. This is relative to the proposed Bachi Court at Cabot's Point Recreation Area and my original statement on September 25th, I had made some, some cost estimates for this public facility and which was in the range of about $30,000 to $50,000. I had estimated $5,000 on the base study of the site, which according to Reston Now, the cost of that study will now be around $14,000, which is about three times more than my original estimate. Given that, and I'm suggesting that the cost will now range between about $40,000 or $60,000 when all is said and done, assuming that there's no more cost growth than the other areas such as construction planning, excavation materials and labor, albeit given federal, state and county requirements that need to be satisfied such as ADA, water management and playground safety, there is little additional, there's likely additional cost growth that will impact this endeavor. Additionally, having just received my Reston annual assessment for 2015, I find that the annual amount per household is approximately $20 annually that goes into new capital assets, which at the Bachi Court would be one of those new assets. Given my estimated cost range, one could equate that about $2,000 to $3,000 individual households would need to contribute to the annual new capitalist asset portion of this public facility development. In my opinion, I don't see that level of support in the neighborhoods that will be in direct, in the direct vicinity of the proposed facility, given the strong public dissent reflected in past board meetings. Hence, I strongly recommend that the board reconsider its actions to develop this property and to spend the people's money more fruitfully in other areas than taking consideration the broader good of Reston Public. And just learning about Pony Barn today, case in point, I believe that Pony Barn project is at the heart of what's good about Reston. That invests in the welfare of the community, both adults and children, and reflects wise investment of funds into our public spaces. I would suggest taking any kind of funds that was going to go towards the Bachi Court and to put that into the Pony Barn. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ellen Goldman.
Hello, my name is Ellen Goldman. I live at 2148 South Bay Lane and of course, I'm here to talk about Bachi Court for the third time. When I first found out about the Bachi Court, I'm going to admit to you that I didn't even know what Bachi was. And this was when we told this group that we hadn't been involved in the planning process at all as South Bay Cluster, the cluster that is the only one that adjoins the court. I'm a college professor, so I went and did some research and on September 25th, I came here and presented a 27-page document to the board, which included something that I keep trying, I keep having a hard time getting passed. And it was an attachment from the World Bachi League. And it says that Bachi can be played on any flat surface. Other material in that document states that Bachi can be played on sand, on gravel, on grass, that it does not require a court to be constructed at any price, David's price or the Reston Association's price. So I keep asking myself, why does a Bachi Court have to be constructed? So I kept on doing further research because that's what I do as a faculty member. And all I come up with is that Bachi is played in leagues and leagues are sizable and then we get into information that's been shared by myself and others about Bachi and the websites are full of pictures of people drinking beer with a Bachi, whatever it's called, in one hand and beer in another. And in fact, the NPR session on Bachi said it's Bachi in one hand and it's beer in another. And this goes on every website you pick out. I supplied examples of these leagues. We have one in Arlington, there's many other in the area. So many of us, as Robin indicated, 20 of us have come and said that we're against the Bachi Court and in the process, we've been labeled as NIMBYs. There are two big reasons that we've been against the building of the Bachi Court. The, probably the first one and the biggest one is parking. Our, our street is called South Bay Lane for a reason. It's rather narrow. When there is one car parked on it, a fire engine cannot get down the lane to the other 30 houses. So we're concerned that if there are leagues and in fact, even if there are just a few teams playing Bachi, that, that fire and ambulance access to our homes will be restricted. So if that makes me a NIMBY, sign me up now. Second concern that we've raised are parties and everything that accompanies them. I just mentioned the beer and Bachi going together. We've said there are no trash receptacles in our little park, no plans for them, no restrooms, et cetera. So we're concerned about what all this traffic might do to the little park at the entrance to our cluster of 30 homes. If that makes me a NIMBY, sign me up now. The biggest difficulty for me is the lack of logic in this entire process. It's proposed to rip up grass in a small park. It's proposed to rip up, and we can argue this till the cows come home, anywhere between 20 and 50% of our small park, which is all grass right now except for a little playground area. In this park, people practice track and field, throw frisbees, have exercise classes and picnic. So we're going to rip all of that up and disturb all of those people so a few folks can play Bachi, something that the World Bachi League says can be played on any flat surface. The logic, I cannot follow.
Ellen, we're running a little bit long time, so just.
I'm not over my three minutes.
Yes, you have.
So I would suggest that the board leave the park as it is and let everybody enjoy the green space, the Bachi players, the frisbee players, the track and field players, the softball players and the picnicers. If we're building a Bachi Court for a league, the space is way too small. Leave it alone and let everybody enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the folks that have signed up to comment this evening. Is there anybody that did not sign up that would like to have an opportunity? Yes, come on up.
I actually did sign up, I don't know why I didn't register. Darlene Parker.
And your address?
2130 South Bay Lane.
Okay.
My husband, Bill Parker, is the president of the South Bay Cluster and he unfortunately could not be here tonight because he's out of town on business. I'll be brief. I spoke at the meeting in September. I would like just to reiterate that if a Bachi Court is to be built in Reston, I ask that a larger, more appropriate site be found that will not impact a neighborhood, cause extra traffic, cars to be parked on narrow streets blocking access for emergency vehicles and possibly unwanted behavior. I hate to see this open space that is enjoyed by the young and old and pinched upon. As I mentioned before, my son played Little League for many years and we spent many hours at that park. We went up to the park and we were able to lay out all the bases and play real baseball games. It was wonderful. And I still see those children and some adults playing baseball, soccer, lacrosse and frisbee in the park. And lastly, I submit that the extra money may go to another project that may be more worthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, I did see your name. You did get on the list. I just went right by you.
I'm Darlene, she's Robin. She's in our neighborhood.
Not related.
That's fine. My bad.
Without hitting somebody named Parker.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who did not sign up who would like to take a moment to make a comment? All right. So why don't I focus back on our side? Why don't I start with you, sir? John, any, any comments for this evening?
I don't have anything particularly pertinent to tonight's meeting, but join everyone and wishing the best for this holiday season and I think we've had a, the RA has had a very, very good year, looking at all of the new faces on the management team. I'm very encouraged that we are a lively, vibrant organization and even looking around at the new faces on the board, I feel that way, so welcome everyone and have a wonderful season. I brand you.
Thank you, John. Eve?
Yeah, it's great to be here and always great to hear from the community. I would hope that everybody gets to swing by Lake Anne. The lights are up and it is beautiful.
I agree.
Yeah, the bridge is lit up and the, so if you walk from the Van Gogh Bridge all the way to the, towards the parking lot, you'll see just a, a great set of interesting lights.
In fact, the tour delight, the bike tour will be this Saturday.
Is it this Saturday? Okay, yeah. Yeah, we, they added a, a new thing of great spheres of light hanging from the sycamore tree. Looks terrific. So yeah, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Eve. Danielle?
I would like to thank the numerous Parker families for coming out tonight. Thank you very much. I, I so appreciate that you're reading the minutes, you're watching and you're making Reston a better place. Thank you to everyone else who came out, to the volunteers, especially to the staff. I am so proud to be part of this organization. Thank you. That's it.
Lucinda?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Happy holidays, everybody. I want to point out my new tie that my sons got me for my birthday. Good job, guys. It's a perfect tie. Very good. The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee had its first meeting, kickoff meeting earlier this month, December 1st, I think, 1st or 2nd. And I think they're off to a, a great start and I'm looking forward to working with the terrific volunteers that have stepped up and we have some more folks that are going to be joining the committee. And I think we have some, a good template, I think, for moving forward with some of the great volunteers from the Pony Barn Group have set a good model to be emulated many, many times, I hope. But happy holidays. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Rachel?
Yes, good evening. Jeff, thank you for your comments and I would encourage, also being a liaison to the Parks and Recs Board, I would encourage those of you who haven't taken a look at that committee and you might be considering becoming a volunteer for Reston, do consider participating in that committee. I was thinking of the lakes earlier in my comments and it would be great to have somebody who is knowledgeable about our aquatic resources within the community, perhaps could contribute to that committee as well as the many other public spaces that we have. So it is a time for giving thanks. I thank the staff for all their hard work and their professionalism and I thank my fellow board members for their contributions and their patience with this board member over my tenure so far and wish you all a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Richard?
Good evening, all. I want to add my best wishes to everyone for the holidays and for a great 2015 ahead. While it's important that we do so all year, it's particularly appropriate that we remember the less fortunate among us at this time of the year. Although monetary donations aren't always needed and welcome, giving our, our time and care can often have a greater impact. I encourage everyone to find a way, no matter how small, in the next two weeks to show someone less fortunate that you care. I'd also like to add my, my personal thanks to a fabulous senior leadership team for your outstanding achievements this year, especially in face of the organizational changes that have taken place. And perhaps more importantly, I wish you the best in the coming year, which may be even more challenging. Finally, happy birthday, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, sir. Will, anything?
On behalf of Chadwick, Washington, Ken Chadwick, myself and the rest of the gang, I want to say happy holidays to everybody. It's absolutely a pleasure working with such a fabulous and professional board and staff and I wish you all a even more entertaining and fun, hopefully a little less challenging 2015.
Thank you, sir. Kate?
I'm speechless.
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to know more about what Richard means about the challenges. Always like to plan ahead for those. I am fortunate, I thank staff, but what I forgot to do, which is most important, is thank you volunteers for all your time. This is not, it's not a couple of hours a month. You guys are giving an inordinate amount of your time, daily, weekly, monthly, and throughout the year. You're constantly looking around the community, letting us know what's going on, responding to members when they have questions with informed answers, and I am so proud to be living in a community with so many people who want to give so much of their time to make a difference. That's what drives me and why I like this job so much. So, I am so honored to be with you guys. I hope you have a fabulous holiday, and I look forward to the new year with not a lot of challenges.
I agree. I'd like to know what those challenges are. I think everybody said what I wanted to say first, Happy Holidays to everybody, be safe, enjoy. I'm hearing winds in the long-term forecasts of potential snow days around Christmas and New Year, so part of me saying I can't wait, and part of me is going, uh-oh. There are a lot of things that are coming to Reston Association, and I ask the community to demonstrate what they have shown tonight, to get involved. We're going through revisiting our strategic plan, and that not only involves the board and staff, but it involves the advisory committees, our stakeholders outside of Reston Association, and most importantly, the members. We're all members, we're all neighbors. So, please provide the same type of input and energy to helping us put together a very good, updated strategic plan for the next five years. Also, elections. You probably saw an announcement in your mailbox, there are many positions at this table becoming available next year, in early part of next year. And I ask everybody to go through what all of us went through with our friends, saying, oh, it's easy, it's not a problem, it's gonna be a couple of days a month, no. But it is worth every, every minute of your time to join the board or join one of our advisory committees. So, I will ask you, whether you're watching this on tape or you're in the audience, and I ask our fellow members and all of you, reach out to those that might be interested, send them my way, our way, if they have any questions, to fill them in on what the possibilities are, but I will tell you that, yeah, it has its moments, but it is overall probably the one of the most fun things I've ever done, and probably one of the most fulfilling things I've ever done for the last five years. So, think about that, keep that in mind, and spread the word, because there's nothing like having new faces show up in the audience. It's fun to see new faces representing the 20,000-plus households out there at the table as well, keeps it fresh. So, again, Happy Holidays, everybody. Let's make this a fun last meeting of the year, so I'll go back to the agenda if that makes sense, and see if we can get out in a timely manner tonight. All right, then I'm going to move on to item G, which is basically what we've been talking about, and if I may, I'll read the motion, dealing with the cost estimate to complete design review board application for bocce court. I move to direct staff in light of the new cost information presented to discontinue efforts in preparing a resubmission application to the design review board for the installation of a bocce court and related accessible facilities at the Cabot's Point Recreation Area.
I second.
All right. Richard, I know that you asked if you could start, so I'll ask you if you wanted to start with the comments.
Great, thank you. Over a year and a half ago, RA member Mike Gondolfo suggested during our budget process that we consider adding a bocce court to RA's list of recreational amenities. After investigating Mike's suggestion, President Keneven, then-Vice President Andy Siegel, and I concluded that adding a bocce court in a park-like setting should be a low-cost way for RA to expand its recreational offerings and create a focal point for a wide spectrum of our members to gather. We saw very little downside in this opportunity. What was originally envisioned by us in the board as a low-cost, low-impact, high-benefit project to bring a new recreational amenity to RA members is now caught up in regulatory challenges. What should have been so simple has become very complex. As approved, the bocce court would be on RA common area at a park that is, to the dismay of some members, designated for the use of all RA members, not just those who live nearby. It has long been an objective of RA, however, to make its recreation areas accessible to all members, including those with physical challenges. That is why the plan for the bocce court included accommodations for accessibility. We are now learning that those accommodations and the DRV-approved design may not meet external requirements. RA has encountered unexpected engineering regulations associated with accessibility. These regulations impact not only the bocce court at South Bay, but additions or enhancements of recreational amenities on other RA common areas as well. Meeting these regulations is not insurmountable, but it can be expensive. These costs can be particularly onerous when looking at a small project like the standalone bocce court at Cabot's Point. RA is now estimating the cost of getting external approvals for the court to be $14,000, bringing the total cost to $20,000. It is clear to me that spending $20,000 for a single bocce court is not in the cards, nor should it be. Therefore, at this time, I would like to offer a substitute motion. Mr. President, I move to amend the motion by striking out the entire motion and substituting the following language. Move to rescind the board's decision of December 12, 2013, to authorize the construction of a bocce court on Reston Association Common Area located at Cabot's Point Recreation Area. It is further moved to direct RA staff and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to explore more practical and cost-effective approaches to bring bocce to Reston. Thank you.
The person, I'll...
It's a substitute motion, I don't think would be, I think that needs a second.
Yes, it does. Second. All right, let me go around the table. Jeff, anything?
No, I think it makes sense in light of the increased cost that we revisit and allow the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee to take under advisement extra recreational facilities that might be appropriate in Reston.
Okay. Rachel?
Agree with Jeff's comments and Richard's comments. It needs to be looked at in the context of the community as a whole, and the Parks and Rec Committee is tasked in part with conducting that, so that's on our agenda for the future. Thank you.
Okay. John, anything?
Just a brief comment, Ken. I think the motion, substantive motion we just heard from Director Chu makes good deal of sense. I regret very much that that's the case. This whole thing is being morphed into an exercise in excess, as a member pointed out. Bocce can be played on a very simple court with a little bit of grass mowing and some chalk, there would be a bocce court anyplace we would like to have it. And I hope we haven't given up at least the concept of simple additional recreational facilities for all age groups. The only bocce I ever played was as a pre-adolescent. It is not a family unfriendly activity. I don't plan on playing any longer. But I hope we can learn from this experience that a good idea can become too good, and therefore unworkable. We heard some wonderful comments about, from our members about the Pony Barn, and I hope we can do something but not allow it to become so large that we can't afford it. And that's the danger that we, I think we have to guard against. So, I have spoken.
All right, thank you. Eve, anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, Danielle?
A question, your motion, in your motion, did you say direct staff to explore other ways to bring bocce to Reston?
Yes, to staff and the Parks and Rec Committee. Pretty much what their charter, anyway.
Why do we, why are we focusing on bocce?
It's just to, it's basically to include in their, in their discovery.
In addition to...
Everything else.
Baseball and tennis. Okay.
Very good. Well, we lost one member. Oh, Lucinda, I apologize, I keep forgetting to look at the speaker box. Lucinda, anything?
Thanks, Ken. I agree with Director Thomas that we should look at the Parks and recreational needs of the community in a holistic way, including everybody and looking at everything. I do like the idea of looking kind of outside the box at new types of recreational amenities like bocce, or yoga, or, you know, other types of new or different, you know, amenities for different ages. But I do think that we should look at this like as an entire plan for the whole community.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'll ask the question, we did lose a director for a second, but I'll ask the question. All those in favor of the new motion as presented by Director Chu, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Oh, I'm opposed to it.
Are you opposed to Richard, Director?
Yeah, because, well, because he's best directing the staff to explore, like, the place to put a bocce court, but we're gonna wait and see what the big plan is from the committee first, I thought.
Well, it was deferred to staff and the committee to consider.
Oh, so that, it would, the committee would also consider it?
Yep.
Just giving you a little leeway, Lucinda.
I vote for it.
Okay, just wanted to give you a little leeway to make sure you interpreted it correctly. All right, so you are, you have given a, yay, all right. So, all those opposed, say no? Anybody abstaining? All right, the motions have it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I might indulge the board for a moment, Mr. Butler, can you come to the podium?
It's kinda scary.
I'd be a little nervous about this as well.
Yeah, right. You could see this one coming.
I didn't.
In light of some of the comments that were made, okay, and in the spirit of trying to keep bocce alive, for less than $60,000, okay, I would like to present you a bocce court.
All right. Can I open it and...
It's right here, buddy.
Can I get a beer? I will share this with my staff, and I think we will have a interdepartmental competition.
Please do. It does not include the balls, it's the court only.
Court only, okay.
Excellent.
And it doesn't include the beer.
But if you, if you invite former Director Siegel and myself, and Mr. Gondolfo, we'll provide NIMBYs.
Sure. Very well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's, we'll move on to the next item, which is the...
Just a second, check on the chat.
Yeah.
Just a recess.
Why don't we take a quick break to make sure our missing director is okay? Don't go too far. Don't, don't go too far.
Now, everybody can hear me call.
All right, we're on item H, which is the 2014 capital carry forward projects. I'll read the motion. I move to accept the 2014 capital project carry forward report and authorize the amendment of the 2015 capital budget to accommodate necessary project cost adjustments, including ball field renovations as proposed by staff in the attached document in our materials.
I second.
All right, Dave, please, come on up.
Paul Creasely, Capital Projects Manager, just going to go over the capital carry forward memo.
Okay.
Most of you have seen this. It came in the packet. I want to reiterate Laura's concern about the tough questions. Of course, the biggest, the biggest item on the carry forward list is the ball fields and that's, you know, the concern. Well, the development of that was we started in 2013 on Brown's Chapel Two, so we got the engineering done. And along the way, 2014, Brown's Chapel One was going to be developed. So, but from the engineer, we learned that the site plan we got for Brown's Chapel Two, we were able to incorporate the one field along with it, and we saved money, so we brought the two projects together, which extended the, the life of the Brown's Chapel Two project into 2014. And so we'll be adding both of those together, which brings, makes the cost look a lot higher. But a lot of, some of the costs in this project also came from the addition of ADA pathways inaccessible and some upgrades in the, some bullpens added into the fence line for the kids to warm up while they're, while they're waiting for the game to progress. You want to hold questions till I finish the whole memo, or you want to break it down on each project? I'll keep going. The bridges, there's just the one bridge, and that is for, we're going to investigate looking at possibly having to do more work, so we want to find a way to get underneath the bridge to inaccessible areas to, you know, look at the footers and the structure of the bridge before we proceed fixing the top. Of course, in the recreation areas, we're carrying forward 26 of the $30,000 that was budgeted for that park at the Pony Born, which is officially known as the Triple Crown Recreation Area. Aquatics, there's six projects, including two that have been carried forward for permitting processes and getting the engineering done. There's been some staff changes in aquatics that have affected the, the, all the projects here, and one of those couple left over that didn't quite get completed. The administration outreach CRM software program, that's a big, big expenditure there that didn't get completed. I'm not too sure David can address that at some point here when he comes up.
So, yeah, we've had, as you know, we've had the website refresh and an accounting system upgrade project. Both of those obviously live in part or in whole on, on our web platform. Until we finish those projects, it doesn't make sense to start a CRM project which ties into those items. So, it's still critical to the organization, but timing wise, 2014 didn't make sense to start that.
I might want to change the name of that. I know what it's implied, but I think it is purely that. It is a CRM software purchase. It's not an outreach. It is, it deals with outreach, but I think we're confusing folks out there to think we're creating some sort of a outward bound program of some sort with our community. It's, it is what it is, and those, those applications are complex and very valuable to organizations like Reston for managing our ongoing dialogues and relationships with our membership. So, just, just a comment there.
Okay, then the final item on the 2014 is for pathways, and the majority of the cost of that carry forward is related to the Hunterswood's pathway lighting improvements that were through with permits and the budgeting issues involved. We also, if you look down at the bottom, there's the Lake End Dam upgrades, which was deferred to 2016, so we're asking to carry that money ahead to 2016, when that's going to come up with the state and local regulatory agencies. That's all we have on the memo. If you have any questions, so.
Why don't I go around the table?
Try to, yes.
Jeff, anything?
No, not at this time. Thanks.
Rachel?
Sorry for the interruption. Are we stabilized on the, on the cost associated with the upgrades for the lighting at Hunterswood's at this point?
Uh, no, we're still, we're still looking for some help from the community, especially the, the businesses and such around the Hunterswood's Shopping Center.
Okay.
So.
Will there be any more visits again to the Design and Review Board?
I'm sorry.
Will there be other sessions of the Design and Review Board on the schedule?
Oh, not for the lighting, no. We've got full approval from the Design and Review Board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I would just like to have a better understanding of how it is that we are able to carry forward unbudgeted dollars. I understand that the unbudgeted dollars are going to be presented to us for approval at some point. But as it stands right now, there are excess carryovers that for, because the carryover is supposed to be carrying over approved budget items. And I understand that in the course of doing Brown's Chapel, we encountered some challenges. I'm disappointed that we are just now learning of the cost of those challenges as a board, okay? Especially since the board just went through a budgetary review, which should have included at least the concept of that being approved. And it also, more importantly, raises the total value of that project. It almost doubles it. So, the board approved an X amount of dollars for that project that now we're being told is going to cost almost twice that much. And if we want to get it done, we're going to have to approve the extra money. Well, that's not necessarily how it all works, but I'm just trying to have a better understanding, and I think David can.
Oh, I can address some of that, but the fact was that we haven't done any of these major renovations of the ball fields at any, any point throughout our history as a, as a community. We've done some similar work at Newport Soccer Field. We did a, a major regrading and adding soil amenities and such. And we took the cost from that field and used that to extrapolate the, the price that we put in for this one. The problem was that we, there are a couple of things. One is the new stormwater regulations that were adopted by Fairfax County this year. That added to the cost. But there's, there's also the fact that we didn't have bids from firms, you know, certified ball field firms to do the work on this level. So, when we got the engineering completed, the engineering didn't get completed till the beginning of the fall. So, as soon as we got all the engineering costs together, then we put out an RFP to certified field construction companies. That's when staff learned how much it was going to be, and it wasn't too long after that that we shared that with the rest of the organization. So, it wasn't like we were cloaking or hiding these costs. They just weren't available to us at the time, so. I mean, David could address the fact about that we're, we're using approved budget funds through the 2014 and 15 budget cycle. So, the funds that we're proposing to use are approved. We're just repurposing them, so. Would you like to speak to that?
I just want to reiterate one thing. As Paul said, this is the first time we've done a major ball field renovation that required a minor site plan, two minor site plans for that matter, one for each field, and the complications that you've heard me address you many times about what the county throws at you, stormwater, E and S controls, all the other things. So, we did just find out these costs when we got the bids back. We were shocked. So, one of the things that we've already done in talking about the reserve study, as you know, one of the things we've added to include all of our assets into the reserve study going forward is ball fields. We never had it in the reserve study before, so we put that in there, and we realized that we have to take a hard look at that, you know, working with criteria to make sure that we reflect those, these costs going forward. So, this is our first time. So, you know, I, I mean, I like to apologize that, you know, we're shocked as you are, but one of the things that Paul said is we're looking at approved funds for ball field renovations that are in the 2015 budget to supplement this. And we're also working with Reston Youth Baseball, you know, looking to see what they might be able to contribute as well. So, we're, you know, we're looking at other, other sources for that in addition.
So, when you come to us with a revised capital budget, some of the expenses that were originally projected for 2015 are going to be reduced in the amount necessary to increase the cost of Brown's Chapel.
Correct.
In fact, that is, that is in your package this evening.
This is a good time for him to step in.
So, I believe the revised packet has been weaved into the, the board materials. If you go to page two, what, what I'm trying to do here is show how all of this affects our capital spending over the biennial budget cycle. And, and really what it illustrates is the, you know, okay, we've, we had some budget busts on the ball fields and sidewalks, and a lot of that's ADA and engineering costs that, that I think it's clear we had not run into that before. We also saved money on vehicle purchases. We consolidated tennis court resurfacing projects under one contractor and saved considerable funds there. So, if you look in the top section, over the course of 2014 and 15, we're going to be spending about $258,000 less than what the board approved back at the end of 2013. The second section shows our carry forwards, and, and Richard, I understand your, the semantics of carrying forward unbudgeted funds, and maybe it's, we're approving the projects at our current estimated cost, be it a 2014 project carried forward to 2015 or a project that was originally budgeted in 2015. You know, we've identified cost savings. As we finished the reserve study, we're actually going to save about $106,000 on, again, tennis courts, multipurpose courts, and things like that. So, this is, I guess what I'm just trying to illustrate is we're not going to spend more than was originally budgeted in the biennial budget approval process. We're going to be spending a little bit less through cost savings and deferring a couple of ball field related projects to a later year, and those would then have to be reapproved at the higher cost, reflecting engineering, ADA, and all that other stuff.
I understand, but the point being that really what we're being asked to do is to approve the carryover of the budgeted amounts, and then at some point in the not-too-distant future, you're going to come before us with a new capital expenditure plan that will account for the shortage. It's two separate things. You can't carry forward.
If I could, if I.
I don't think.
I'm allowed.
Yes, please.
Two, two things I want to point out. When you look at page two of the presentation, I want you to pay particular attention to that middle box. And where it says it's a 2013 project. When that says it's a 2013 project, that was budgeted in 2011. So, the estimates that were put together for ball field upgrades were done several years ago. We had no idea what some of the costs would be. That's point one. Point two is if you take the time to turn the pages and you get back to the last two pages, a new 2015 capital budget is before you this evening, so that you can see what we've done. And David is prepared to go through that this evening. We understand the veracity and the importance of this. We did not learn, as Paul indicated, as Larry indicated, about what the cost would be until the end of November. You had already approved the budget at that point. We're trying to do the right thing and let you know what's going on, so we're not hiding anything. We've done the work, and I'd like you to give the staff the opportunity to present the new information.
But Kate, in all fairness, we're not being asked to approve a modified capital expenditure budget. We're being asked to approve, we're being asked to approve the carryover of budgeted amounts. I'm not raising other than the same shock that staff has, you know, said in terms of the amount. I'm not, that's not the issue. The issue is the process. The issue is the form of what we're doing, and that's what I'm questioning. I don't think we should be doing it.
So, yeah, okay, and I, yeah.
Well, the, I'm going to go to you, John, but the only thing I would add is the motion actually states that we're moving to accept both the capital project carry forward report and authorize the amendment of the 2015 capital budget. John?
Couple of things, Ken, on that latter point that we can defer to Mr. Washington, who as soon as you mentioned earlier the bench, I saw his eyes light up. We're not talking about you being elevated to the bench, okay? But I would defer to you on, for this point. That portion of the motion that talks about authorizing a budget amendment, I believe requires a public hearing in advance before we can vote on it. So, it's probably, that portion of it's probably out of order. I would ask for counsel to.
I'll judge that.
Second point that I'd make, in, in some agreement with Mr. Chu and some perhaps not, it has been the policy of this board in the past that both budgets, the operating and capital, would be managed by, by the CEO to the bottom line. And for the operating budget, that makes a good deal of sense. For the capital budget, it probably makes less sense, but in fact, that's what we've done. So, the carryover basically is notice to you of the status of projects, because the CEO can move those funds around however she wishes. Finish Brown's Chapel using money for another project that is not finished and be fully within the, the bounds of, of this board's policy. I don't think that's a sound policy, but that's what it is, and I think we need to examine that in the coming year. And the last comment I'd make is however we go forward with this, I would ask just for my own use and for future utility, that the motion included dollar signs somewhere. It does, it references a rather nonspecific portion of the attachments. So, will we say, if, if indeed we can authorize additional budget, how much are we talking about?
And a point of clarification, I'm not asking for more money. We're working in with the, am I incorrect?
That, and also, so the budget that was approved back in November, when the board approved the budget and the assessment rate, these changes do not affect that? So, the capital.
Bottom line.
There's no bottom line change here.
The CapEx funding is.
Amendment to the budget seems to be unnecessary.
I, the only, the only reference, and I apologize for speaking out of turn, is that in accordance with the new resolution that was passed, I am required to notify you if, if monies are being, you know, shifted from one. you if, if monies are being, you know, shifted from one project to another in excess, and we wanted to do our due diligence, and, and I worked with counsel to create this motion, by the way.
If no one were listening, I would say notification doesn't require approval. Notification is notification.
Right.
Done. I'm finished.
Even.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm taking in what John is saying and.
Okay. Danielle?
Ask me the question one more time. Could you repeat? Comments on this?
Comments on this? I'm trying to understand, Richard, what, what the real problem here is because I see a lot of cost savings, and I see that they're using those cost savings to apply it to over-budgeted items. And at the end of the day, if I'm reading this properly, is it true, it's at the top of the page, the Biennial Capital Expenditures Budget Summary, that for 2014 and 2015, even with this over at John Brown's Chapel, you're ahead 258,000?
That's correct, and that's achieved through cost savings in several areas, and then deferral of about 190,000 in dollars that were going to be spent on Hook Road, which that 190,000 is no longer valid. That needs to be deferred to a future year and approved as a project.
So, that, that somewhat concerns me that we thought we were getting something, but now we're not. But even if you put that 190,000 in here, 258,000 minus 190, let's say that was a valid number, we're still well ahead. You're under budget. And I think Kate needs, and the staff needs a little bit of room. Something wasn't getting done, then I'd be very concerned.
I, I only raised, you know, the intent was only to raise two issues. One was the board approved a project that through, for the sake of a better word, has now incurred overruns equal to almost what was authorized to spend in the first place.
Hundred percent overrun.
Okay, which is, I mean, that's something that needs to be discussed, okay? Now, the other part was a procedural part, and that I did not see if we are saying that we have a capital budget and the board has approved that capital budget, then carrying over from year to year is a normal part of the process. But, carrying over and adding in the same step is not necessarily, okay? But, in this case, and, and the reason I'm saying it's a procedural question is, in this case, staff has found through one means or another, savings that are offsetting the increases. Well, next year, that may not be the case, or the following year, that may not be the case.
Okay, I understand.
I just think there's a procedural issue here.
I understand your position. But I, I do have one more question. It's a one and a half million carryforward. Are these typically the size for carryfords? Or is this like a much larger carryforward this year than has happened in the past?
This is larger than typical. Part of it, though, one, well, $520,000 is strictly for Lake Anne, for the dam, and that was, that's been deferred for two years now because of a study that the state legislature is requiring Department of Conservation and Recreation to do on the probable maximum precipitation that is used for modeling dams. And our hope is that it will be favorable to us in the end, and that the reconstruction or alteration we have to do on the Lake Anne Dam is less intense than what it would be if we had to meet the code right this second. So, that deferral, you know, is, is hanging there. So, the, the carryforwards for Brown's Chapel is unusual because, again, you know, we were shocked with the bids we got. The rest of those smaller projects that are involved with the county, those, you know, we wish we didn't have them, but those, you know, we do have a few of those each year.
Okay. Thank you. So, the information we now have about the cost of ballfield renovation, obviously, will go into the planning for.
Yeah, so, Paul and I, while Paul did most of the heavy lifting, but we came up with a per-square-foot cost inclusive of engineering, permitting, design fees.
Very good.
Plan reviews, and then the actual regrading and upgrades. And I'm getting that into the reserve study back to the engineers so we can get that properly accounted for.
Okay, so we'll, so we've got a little, a little stumble here, but it'll go, it'll go forward in, so, yeah.
Lucinda?
No, no comment. Thank you.
The, the comment I would make is, one, the motion was put together with counsel, correct?
Right, and you're fine. You have to have a hearing for the biennial budget. You don't have to have a hearing for the purposes that you're having this evening. So, you're okay process-wise on the current process.
And I would ask our CFO that the audit staff, auditors, would look at this at the time, at the appropriate time, and look at this and see no issues with what we're doing procedurally tonight as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think we're getting in the mode that I've been trying to discuss with regard to governance for some time now, and that we keep the board focused on the things in front of us and allow the administration issues to be handled by the professionals that we have good faith in, and that would be our chief financial officer, our director for parks and recreation, those people involved with it, our CEO and counsel, and our treasurer, and move on. And, and make this, let's just, let's continue. I have good faith in the staff that they've done the right thing, and I think we've had a good discussion. Those are my comments.
I have a motion on the floor.
So, I ask the question. All those in favor of the motion as read, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining?
Lucinda, was your vote aye?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, as my computer comes back to life. Multimodal transportation. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, that's fine.
Can I ask you a question while you're pointing that out?
Please, yep.
Is there anything that says that a CapEx line item, if it goes over a certain, over budget by a certain amount, that it has to come back and be reviewed by the board? And again, you don't want to be tying the hands of staff too much. Have we ever thought about that?
If you have expenditures that cause you to go over budget, your whole budget to be blown, as opposed to a specific item to get blown, then you need to see, try to go to the board to approve that extra expenditure. But if the staff manages to have savings to keep you from lower budget, then they're okay.
Okay.
Okay. I can wait for Larry a little bit, but this item, I think, is going to be focused on, I think, what we were talking about earlier, that I think Mr. Valentini brought up very well. And that is, one aspect is, because of the, I think, a very good impression that Mark Fenton made with not only our group, but also with the developer community, as well as with the members, that we would like to keep him involved with us, but more importantly, some of the initiatives that he highlighted for us that we'll discuss this, this evening. And one of them will be us getting involved with our stakeholders because it's quite apparent many of us see the value of going forward with the healthier community concept that Mark is so good, did such a great job of presenting to us, and how do we get the key stakeholders to work with us to make this happen? So, there are a lot of elements to this that have been discussed, and Larry will start with you, maybe giving us a good roundabout overview of everything here.
Yeah, I'll just take a few minutes. Thank you for the intro there. What you have in your packet, I believe you've got the note sheet that Mark Fenton put together of his post-workshops download to, to Kate and I, and we were having kind of a brainstorm, and then he, he made some sense out of that and then sent that to us as a follow-up. So, what I want to do is just highlight some of the, the key takeaways that Kate and I have discussed, that we think going forward with Reston Association and the community as a whole, not unlike what Matt Valentini talked about earlier in his comments, of how the community can really become more engaged in multimodal transportation, because that's really the way Reston is heading. It's becoming less of a car-oriented community to one that is going to really have to look at all modes for people to really get around, and to get around efficiently. And how do we, you know, how do we become advocates for that? How do we help that move forward? So, with that, I just want to touch on some of the highlights, and again, this is really kind of just a synopsis of what you have on those two and a half or three sheets that were in your packet, but for the good of the watching public, as well as you in the synopsis form, we'll go through this. So, the first recommendation that Mark had, and who here, I can't remember all the faces that were at either of the workshops, I know about half the board, I think, participated in that. You know, I hope you found that there was good value in that. I thought it was really interesting and pretty high-energy presentation, so I'm not going to do.
Understatement.
I'm not doing that tonight. But his first recommendation was to build a, a leadership and active design, and that's just a term that Kate and I really came up with, but create an internal design team for the association, which would be staff, representatives of the advisory committees, the DRB, and so forth, that really focuses on urban design and mixed-use design. And that's kind of the key team that will sort of drive this whole effort, both here and then with the, what you'll see next, which is more of a larger, broader stakeholder team. So, this would be 10 to 12 members, and as those of you that were at Mark's talks knows, it's sort of the three Ps. You've got programs, projects, and policies, and, and those are kind of the three underlying key pieces of the foundation for multimodal transportation, and in addition, healthier transportation. How do you get people more fit, more active, within their own community? And, you know, we talk about sustainability, there's been a lot of talk about that recently, and by creating those spaces and avenues for people to both socially engage and become physically engaged, it creates a more sustainable community. So, our recommendation here is that we establish this in the first quarter of 2015, and, and there's no cost to do this, it's a pretty straightforward thing, but one of the really important things is that we need the commitment of those people who are going to be volunteer, assigned, appointed to this group, that they've got to be committed to be in it for the long haul and to put their energies into it. Probably a slightly more difficult task will be one B here, which is to create a, an overall Reston area healthy design implementation team, which would include members of the leadership and active design, the more internal group, and then importantly, get key stakeholders and really decision-makers from the community involved. So, this is going to require the county, VDOT, the chamber, planning and zoning committee, you know, really important groups who do make decisions about transportation in their day-to-day business, in, you know, whether they're policymakers or, or the like. And one of the most important things here is this bottom yellow bullet, which is, they have to embrace the vision. You know, they, the three Ps are important, it's important to them, their belief in how the community will move forward with multimodal transportation, and this has to be aligned with their work. In other words, it's not something that their supervisor says, you know, you got to go do this, it's something that they do, and they get it, and they can make decisions about it. And so, that, this is going to be, I think, a challenging piece to put together, and we're going to have to work with our elected leaders to get the right people to the table. But this is a really important piece, which is why we've given a little more time to accomplish that, kind of looking at April, May timeframe. But to begin those conversations, similar, you know, really first of the year to, to begin to, to have those people.
And Larry, before you move on with the development community, I've already gotten Mr. Valentini's commitment. He's, he and his organization, his firm, are very interested in making this happen and putting resources toward it.
Moving right along. The second major piece of this is to develop mixed-use design guidelines for Reston's development and redevelopment areas. You've heard Kate and I talk about this on many occasions, and one of the things that we're recommending is to bring Mark Fenton back to facilitate a workshop and charrette scenario. We don't have, you know, we don't have our arms totally around it, two, three days, might involve going to Tyson's to see what's good, what's bad, what's ugly, and then come back to Reston and say, what's good, what's bad, what's ugly, what would you do right? But really to develop some of the guiding principles of what we think is important for healthy design, you know, multimodal, doing walk and bike audits, you know, it's going to be really, really, you can imagine with him leading this, it's supposed to be a really active two or three days. There'll be a lot of walking, I don't know about the bike part, but there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of movement, there'll be a lot of, a lot of talk, and a lot of great ideas thrown around that we, that we need to capture, that we then, as an organization on behalf of the Reston community, would want to incorporate in developing urban design guidelines. And this is something where the designer review board and Fairfax County, I think, will have a, a large stake in this as well. And again, getting them to the table and to the workshops and things like that is going to be really key, and so we'll have to work with our elected officials to have that happen. And so, what we're suggesting here is this be in early summer, which is a nice time to get outside, it's not, you know, brutally hot. We're not suggesting July and August when people are on vacation and it's 95 degrees out, so we're kind of thinking that, you know, June timeframe would be a great time to conduct this and to, you know, to have this kind of, kind of workshop. And I'm, I've sent Mark an email, but we figured the approximate cost to do this is about $5,000 and somewhere in that range, and we believe we can get corporate sponsorship to assist with this, much like we did with the prior workshops that, that he conducted. Because this is really important to the community, and as, you know, Matt is one development representative here, it's important to, to the builders as well and the developers because they really see it, but as Matt suggested, there's a, you know, there's some hurdles at other levels that, you know, where I think our advocacy and our assistance can, can help move that along, and that's really something that we hope to do. And number three, community outreach, education, and recruitment. This is, how do you get the word out about multimodal transportation, healthy design for the community? How do you make it more grassroots? And Mark suggests then is, well, you know, you take it to sort of those lowest common denominators and build up, you know, so you got to get your kids at the schools involved, whether it's, we already have a very active walk and bike to school program here, let's, let's start then. We'll make them some of our junior advocates for this whole process. Scout groups, service groups, even clusters. I know when RA staff are out meeting with clusters, this could be one, one of the things that's, you know, just a, kind of a briefing topic that could be covered. So, similar to the larger design charrette and workshop, we could conduct walk and bike audits in key areas around schools, and that sort of gets people to understand, wow, you know, my kid would bike to school if there were this in place, or they could walk if, you know, this were here. It's just really, it's that getting people to understand, because a lot of people don't know what they're looking for, you know, but if you go out there and say, you know, would your, you know, son or daughter, you know, bike or walk if this was done? What, what would it take to do that? And those are the kinds of things that, that Mark is suggesting we, you know, really advocate, and, and that's really at the more local level. But that's how you build the constituency, is working, working at the very local level. And, and this is something that is really an ongoing piece, and quite frankly, the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee is already, you know, doing a great job of getting these things started. I mean, just, you know, with the awards that were given out at the, the board meeting the other month, where, you know, you got all these, you know, kids participating in both walking and biking, so a great thing to see, and, you know, sometimes bettering the community where I grew up in Vienna. So, then the fourth piece of this is goat trail identification, or Mark's, he likes to call them desire lines, it's where people desire to walk. I use the, for me to talk about this before, the, the George Mason example, how they did their pathways, they built all the dorms and stuff and didn't do anything, they waited till the kids walked the closest distance to the classrooms, they said pave it, and it worked, for the most part. There were still little cut-throughs, but that's, that's one way to do it. So, we have those around Reston, and the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee has done a great job with the Reston on foot and bike and identifying many of those, but there's others that are, that are out there. And so, again, and as, much the same as working with kind of the local grassroots and schools level, this is a way to engage youth groups, scout groups, and things like that on how to identify and prioritize and get funding for these little goat trails. And all these, the, the goal of this is to, hey, if you make it easier for people to walk and bike by taking out some of the barriers, hey, they might do it. They'll be more inclined to do it. And so, that's really what we're trying to do, and we're suggesting that this commence this coming fall. But again, part of this is really already being started by PBAC. Then the fifth, the fifth piece of this is to establish a multimodal transportation advisory committee, and this is something you've, you've heard about, and this is really combining the efforts of our current transportation advisory committee and, and PBAC. And when you, for the. And when you, for those of you who have been to one or both meetings, a lot of the discussions are already aligned. I mean, the priorities are really kind of the same. What are the best transportation decisions that should be made on behalf of Reston? Who's making them, how do we influence them, and those kinds of things? And I think by creating one committee that speaks about reviews and speaks about the various modes of transportation that are used in this community, we can speak with a stronger and more comprehensive and probably somewhat more focused voice. And so this is something that we're recommending to do in the beginning of the new year. And those conversations, I know some, Kate's had some of those conversations already. And so this is something we want to recommend that the board support as well. And I think that is the end of my little highlight. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
I think it was a very good summary of what Mark laid out for us. And for those of you that weren't there, it was, both sessions were very well attended. And what I found fascinating about the afternoon session, the lunch session, is how active the developers were. And in fact, I saw Matt basically saying, you're preaching to the choir. And his comment was, we together need to go to the county and other stakeholders to get them to see that. And I think that's the point he made tonight as well. But why don't I go around the table first to get some comments on, on conceptually what we're talking about? Jeff, any thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I think the biggest thought is, is, well, I mean, the, the multimodal transportation issue here in Reston, it, the key to its success, anyway, is going to be that engagement with, with our partners, because in a, we, we don't have the answers here within our, our means. So it's really, we really need to find a way to, to get the county and the development community to partner with us to help develop those standards. Because I'm concerned, you know, I'd be interested in finding out, you know, developing urban design standards, what, what type of effort is that? How much would it cost from, you know, beginning of the project to closeout of the project? Because $5,000 is a good, is a good start for a conversation. But I'd be kind of interested in knowing what the scale of that type of effort is and what reasonably we could expect from our, our partners in doing that. Because I, that's going to be an important question as we move forward, because I, I would hate to have us move down the line and make certain investments only to come up against, you know, a wall that's completely insurmountable, and we've kind of burned money that is, is going to, you know, fizzle out in front of an insurmountable wall. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts on it. We really, I need to get a better idea about what scale this effort is.
For that one particular piece with regard to the number two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rachel?
See if I can croak this out. There are basically two designs that we would be building upon already. There's a design that was Reston's, and to some degree, we're all aware of it, there's a design that was more or less imposed by county standards. And so a new effort to try and meet the ideal of multimodal is, is a very good one. I think the, the initial idea of grassroots brings to the table the people who can probably express with greater clarity what their needs are. And also ask, just from my own observance around Reston community, is that elders use our trails not just for getting from point A to point B, but they use them for their health and recreation intensively. And so pulling in that, that advisory committee and that, that group and the representation, I think, is important. Finally, there are some Reston residents and citizens who don't have any alternatives other than bus transportation or car transportation. So looking to those portions of our community that have the greatest needs because of limited resources, to use more efficient and more cost-effective mechanisms to get from point A to point B should be a prime consideration in what we undertake. So looking at our communities, particularly our public housing communities, and trying to get a sense of what their needs are and where they can derive the greatest benefit, because oftentimes they have the greatest need, they do it not only for recreation, but they use it as their primary way of transportation. Thank you for a very insightful presentation.
Thank you.
Richard, anything? I'm going to echo what Jeff had to say. I think this is very aspirational, but I think that we need to have a better view of, as, as Jeff has suggested, where are we going? What, what is our, what is really going to be our sphere of influence in this process? Are we really going to influence VDOT? If, if the thought is that we can, I think that's aspirational, but I'm not sure it's practical, because the rest of the state is having trouble with this. So, I mean, that's not to say that we're not better than the rest of the state, because we may be. And this is very admirable in terms of its approach. The other thing I'm trying to figure out is, what is, what is the action that we're going to be asked to take tonight?
The action would be to allow us to move forward, you know, in pursuing all five items, with the exception of two, because what I understand with two is that that one in particular, you want to understand the scope more. The others are, are low-hanging fruit, I can see that front, and I understand that.
I think 1B is, is going to be a challenge, too, in terms of the proposed membership of that group.
I think we're asking if we can try.
Can try.
If you allow us to, to give and try.
Yeah, there's no, there's no direct cost, there's, there's staff time, clearly, but there's no direct-
Right.
-out-of-pocket expense on that.
Right.
All in favor of trying?
We are, we are willing to try.
I would add that one of the critical actions that I would like to find a way to move forward for actual consideration is the formation of the multimodal transportation advisory committee.
Right.
And that is basically the combination of the PBA, the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee and the transportation advisory committee, and focus this new advisory committee much more on the tenants that we've been discussing since, well, prior to Mark's arrival, but I think he helped focus it very well. It ties very well into the sustainability charter being developed, ties in very well with our urban design guidelines efforts that we're working on. And I think it solidifies how we can use, as you can see, our advisory committees, I think, are coming of age, and we're revamping some of them. I think it's allowing us to leverage the advisory committees in a new way with those stakeholders that we need to work with more carefully. I think as you pointed out, you know, reaching out to those stakeholders like VDOT, what have you, yeah, they are challenging. But if you think about it, between the people in the room, some of them out in the audience, as well as our committees, I think we have many of them ready to take a call. The outcome from that call is unpredictable at this time, but it's not like we're doing a cold call here. This is, this is a conversation that I think so many would be enlightened with, especially when you're getting the support of some developers who see the value as well. Anyway, my two cents. So that's one of, one of the actions I'd like to move forward perhaps for consideration in an upcoming board meeting, would be to work on that new advisory committee. John?
Yeah, I think the, well, two things. One is, the developer interest in this, I can tell you, is 100% consumer-driven. It is. They are responding to demands from the, the purchasing public. And it, there is no doubt that, that as the millennials are moving into buying, and, you know, in real estate, we, we study this, a lot of data out there on the, on the topic, but, and I just know anecdotally that, just by looking at metrics on where my traffic comes from, on my website and Facebook page and stuff like that, that I have a huge following of young Arlington people. And that, you know, and the thing is, is that they can afford to live there when they're young and single, and they can, don't care what kind of a horrible apartment they're living in. But when they're married, they start thinking about a kid, they have to move. And Reston is one of their, sort of like, okay, I could, I, if I have to go to the suburbs, this is, they can tolerate this. And, you know, and I have, I know that sounds terrible, doesn't it? No, well, I mean, you know, my children are, you know, ages like 40 to, you know, whatever, and 30 some, and they're like, they, they can, they are comfortable in this environment because, you know, when they are in our little urban, our, you know, gritty urban core there down at Reston Town Center, they, they, they can, you know, sort of simulate that feeling of being able to walk places. But this, so I think that we need to take advantage, though, of that, all, even if it is just consumer-driven, but the, the developers have got money to spend on this, and we should be able to take advantage of this, and that the urban design guidelines, I think, is going to be key, because we have, you know, some conflicts to resolve, you know, our, you know, you have to have something to walk on if you're, you know, so we have to get over our, our loathing of light and sidewalks in our, the areas that are going to be more urban, you know, not out in the, so these things that we were working on with DRB. I, I think it is super important, I think we should move forward as fast and hard as we can. Because we'll take less pressure, we'll take the pressure off of our natural areas and keep it focused where we want it focused.
I agree with moving forward as fast as we can, for many reasons that have been stated around the table, but also because my children are not able to safely, safely walk to school or to the pools or to the, you know, the pizza place straight up or the ice cream shop without fear of being hit or almost hit or, it's, it's, it's bad just going on Reston Parkway. So I would love to see this. But I agree with Jeff and Richard both about, about the practicality, you know, what, what can we really do? But we won't know until we get started.
Lucinda?
Oh, I think that this is a fabulous idea, I think it's perfect timing to bring it up, I always support it. I do agree that the partnerships are going to be very important, because we, you know, as an association, we don't have the resources to implement it, you know, entirely. I have some packaged, I have the packaged workshop and a lot of materials about the key players involved in this type of process, so I'd be happy to share with them, with Kate and the staff, and also, you know, any other types of support you want. I think it's also important to include the aging community and the disability community in, in the process from the very beginning, so our, our vision forward to helping out with this.
Okay. Then I, I think the, the outcome, and I'll let Kate and Larry finish up, but I think the outcome from this, this evening's discussion is, let's move forward with it. I think we recognize the challenges, and I agree, there may be some aspirational things here that we, we could be potential roadblocks, but I suggest that they may not, depending on how we approach this, especially with some of the key partners that are willing to assist us. And I'd like to keep us focused on, and maybe it's an item for an upcoming, the upcoming VPC, that we look at the revision of the advisory committees to focus on multimodal transportation. So that would be my suggestion. Larry, Kate, any thoughts?
Just want the permission to move forward.
Just, just keep at it.
Then why don't we do, all those in favor of moving forward, giving-
It's all, all those in favor of giving permission-
Right.
-to move forward.
Can I, can I pose one question?
Please, you may.
That would be, has there been a sense from the two committees that are being proposed to be joined, their preference and their opinion on that joining?
Yes, there have, I think so.
I mean, I've attended some of the meetings, but that specific issue didn't come up.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to know what our liaisons to the, those two committees might have to say in regards to how best to approach them on this and get their sense of their own ideas in that regard.
Lucinda, did you hear the question?
I'm not going to.
Sorry.
Rachel has asked, are the committees that we're suggesting be combined, we're focusing on the development, the creation of the multimodal transportation advisory committee, and are the existing committees aware, from your perspective, of the intentions so far?
Well, I, I like how the committees are now, however, I think that the chairs and, you know, there's been a large movement to merge two committees, and that's, you know, as I understand, going to happen, so I am going along with it.
Okay, well, that was sort of an answer to the question, does that help, Rachel?
That's, that's satisfactory.
And I'm assuming that at some point in the near future, that you guys are going to come back to us with a resolution modification.
Yes.
And I'm assuming at that point that we can include the current chairs of the two committees to voice their committees' viewpoints on the proposed merger.
I think that, if I may?
Yep.
I, I would think that, I think that the board has to do this based on what the board needs. As we merge the, the tennis into, into Parks and Recreation, and I'm sure that after many, many years of being their own thing, I mean, there is a natural kind of inclination to really not want that, that, I mean, and I'm, I'm not saying that that's the case here, but I think that fundamentally, it really has to be what the board needs in terms of inputs to our decision-making, that has to be the driving force. Otherwise, we're just working on preserving little spaces that-
Status quo.
Status quo, thank you, thank you, that's a-
I mean, I, I fully agree with you, okay? I, I agree that it's the board's decision, I, I believe that the board has a notion as to where it wants to go, but we have made a very big thing over the last year of engaging our committees. We should at least give them an opportunity to say, we fully support it, this will be the best thing since sliced bread, let's go forward, or have you thought of this, have you thought of that, have you thought of that? I'm not saying it should, I just think we should give them the opportunity in light of the culture that we're trying to evolve, you know, establish in terms of committee engagement, that's-
Can, can I ask something?
Well, I'll start it, I'll start what you listen to, and I'll go around the table.
Okay. I don't, I don't know, like, about the tenants advisory committee, but the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee is one of our highest-functioning committees. We've got a great group of people, we've got a terrific chair, and they produce a lot of high-quality events and materials and advice for us, and I, I would hate to mess with that.
Okay. Danielle, any comments?
No.
Okay. Eve, do you have any follow-up or thoughts?
No.
Okay. John, anything? Jeff, anything?
Yeah, I, I think that we have a lot of good volunteers on, on both committees, and I think regardless of the structure we've come up with, we'll still get the engagement of those folks, I think we'll be okay.
Rachel?
I agree that we'll get the engagement, and I agree this is a step forward, and I agree with these comments, that this is a step that the board needs to take.
If there's any follow-up?
No further questions.
Will, any comments on anything?
You're looking good.
Okay. Kate? Then I, maybe I can create a motion and see where it goes. I move to direct staff to, one, recommend next steps as proposed by the Reston Association's Healthy Community Building Consultant, Mark Fenton, to the board. Item, two, determine those follow activities as prescribed by Mark Fenton that should be undertaken, along with the timeline and resources needed to move forward. And three, establishment, establish a multimodal transportation advisory committee which would supplant the association's existing transportation advisory committee and pedestrian and bicycling, bicycling advisory committee.
Merging.
Merging them, yes, which would, yes, merge.
Yeah.
That's a better term, yes.
Good word.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll start with you, Jeff.
Nope.
Rachel?
I'm done.
Okay. Will, any comments on the motion, Rod?
I think the motion is good. Long, but good.
John? Eve?
Yeah.
Danielle? Lucinda?
I'd like to make a counter motion to approve everything except we could vote on merging the committees separately.
I'll second that.
We have a new motion.
It's an amendment.
It's an amendment. Discussions, start with the...
Well, wait a minute. Doesn't Rachel have to accept the amendment?
It's not just, only if it's a friendly amendment. She hasn't offered it as a friendly amendment.
Lucinda, this is Danielle. Could you repeat that?
I'd like to make a counter motion and just that we vote on the merging of the two committees separately from the rest of the motion.
She's just separating the two.
The motion is the first two, not the third one, or is it two?
True. Oh, yeah. No, no, her motion is just the first two.
Right.
And the third piece separate. Yes, you've got it correct.
Yeah, okay.
The original motion was not to complete the merge, it was to have staff come back with a...
Yes.
Okay, so the...
So we're not...
Right, so we're not voting on merging the, that, Lucinda, the motion was to direct staff to come back on those four items, including the merging.
And the three items that Ken read were literally the cover, if I understand correctly, of your item packet.
Right, so this doesn't merge them, it directs staff to come back with an amendment that would allow us to merge them...
At a later...
At a later meeting, probably the January meeting, or something like that.
Do you want me to reread the motion?
No, no, thanks, I understand the motion, I just don't want, let's start out with the piece, so if we pulled it out, then I could vote for the other parts at this stage.
So you have a motion on the floor? You have a motion on the floor by Lucinda, is that right?
Seconded by Richard.
Seconded by Richard, so that makes two.
But we need to call that question.
All right, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Director Shannon, seconded by Director Chu, please signify by stating aye.
Pose one question first.
Aye.
Just a timeline.
That is to be turned in by staff?
Yeah.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
All right, the motion failed, so we'll go back to the original motion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Is anybody abstaining? Thank you, all right. Did you, basically, Sabrina, it's the bolded statements.
Right, yeah, I got that, thank you.
That is it for the agenda items. I, do you have a reason? I do not.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to...
Sure.
...talk to you afterwards as...
Okay.
All right.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second.
No executive second?
No.
Unless you want one, Jeff.
All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right.
Happy holidays.
Made it.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, that's right.
Thank you for keeping us up.